Okay. This evening, thanks everybody for coming. We're having a, later on, we're going to have a joint meeting with the Finance Committee. Thank you all for coming here early. We have Attorney Mead here to discuss a latest ruling from the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court. And I think I'm going to suspend the order of the agenda and get, move right into Attorney Mead.
Sure.
That's okay with my board? And then, thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board for having me here. A few weeks ago, we sent out a, an alert and a proposed policy related to a decision that, as the chair referred to, that came down from the SJC. Some of us were anticipating this decision, not necessarily exactly what it was, but we were anticipating a decision. There'd been a Supreme Court, a Superior Court case involving another community a couple of years ago, which started us advising towns about their policies with regards to public comment and what would be permissible and not permissible under the First Amendment and also under the Massachusetts Constitution as well. So, the case that, that we're referring to is Barron versus Kalenda and Another, which is really the Board of Selectmen of the town of Southborough. And it was from the SJC, and it had to do with a person's right to speak during public comment and the board's right to control the content of that speech. I'm going to go right to the punchline and then we'll back up. So, essentially, the ruling says, a town, if they have public comment at a board meeting or a commission meeting, if they have general public comment, you may only regulate time, place, and manner of that content. That is, for example, public comment will happen at the beginning of the meeting for 10 minutes, and each person will be allowed to speak for two minutes. That's time, place, manner. Okay? That's what you're allowed to do. And then, a person can get up and speak to anything that they wish to speak, speak to during that time period during public comment, and frankly, can speak very excited if they need to speak, and very loud, and be less than courteous, and less than civil during that speech. They may not shout obscenities or make true threats, certainly, but they are allowed to speak without having their content regulated. That is different than speaking during a specific item on the agenda. So, if you have an item on the agenda to discuss basketball courts, the board, A, doesn't have to take any comment on that item, if it's just in a public meeting, and B, could limit any comment to be the discussion of basketball courts on that specific agenda item. The board also, under the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, does not have to have public comment on their agenda. So, that is also an option for the board. Obviously, different boards have different needs and different requirements and want to encourage public interaction, so that's up to the board and the policy they, they have. But there is no requirement to have public comment. We say that if you, our recommendation is if you do have public comment on your agenda, that you should adopt a policy that talks about when the comment is going to be and the length of time a person can speak during that comment period, so you have the time period so everybody can speak if they want, but you have at least a time period to control that. So, that's time, place, manner. If you're holding a public hearing in a public meeting, like a special permit, for example, and you have to have public comment, of course, during that public hearing, all those in favor, all those opposed, again, you can limit that comment to the matter before the board, that is the special permit. Right? So, anytime there is a specific agenda item, if you're going to have public comment on that agenda item, you may limit it to that agenda item. That's content restriction, and the court said you're allowed to do that, because boards and committees and governmental bodies need to get through their business. That's a footnote that they talked about in the, in the case. So, you're allowed to do that. This also does not, this decision does not apply to town meeting. It, that is a legislative action run by the moderator for specific purpose. So, there is no, typically, no general comment at a town meeting. Now, there may be some town moderators that have that at the beginning of the meeting, I don't know. None of the towns that we represent have that. But generally, it does not apply. This case would not apply at town meeting during specific discussion of specific articles in the meeting. All right? Those articles, the discussion would have to be limited to the article's subject matter as the moderator discusses it. So, that's the overview of this decision. You know, the facts of the decision, the facts of the case are very interesting. The town of Southborough had a policy, but the policy talked about having a person come up and speak in a civil manner and be courteous, and the court said that requiring a person to speak in a particular way and to be courteous really went to content, and that they rolled it all the way back to the founding fathers and acknowledged that probably during the revolution, for example, people going to public meetings were less than courteous to have the public discourse that they needed to have, which, of course, is true, and they went back and cited, you know, Sam Adams and John Adams and a whole host of other writings in the development of the Constitution, both in Massachusetts and in the US Supreme, the US Constitution. So, my, our recommendation to the board is, if you're going to have public comment, which, you know, for obvious reasons is important, that you adopt a policy regarding when that public comment occur, and make it clear about how long each speaker has to speak during that public comment period. Now, I did have a question from a body the other day about, well, let's say we have 10 minutes on the agenda, but we have something really hot on the agenda, and somebody, you know, there's 15 people that show up, and we've said, "Two minutes," and there's only 10 minutes. Well, certainly, that's your policy, but in that instance, at the beginning of the meeting, the chair could say, "Look, we have this really hot item on the agenda, we see 15 people here that want to speak, and so, we're going to extend our public comment to 30 minutes tonight." And that's what you stick with, right? So, you've acknowledged, and maybe all those people don't speak, so then you can move on when they're done. But at least you've said, in the beginning of the meeting, here's how we're going to regulate time, place, manner in this meeting because of the people who are in attendance. I'm happy to take any questions.
That's an allowable...
Yes.
Deviant.
You're announcing ahead of time, time, place, manner, here's what we're going to do tonight.
Okay. Any questions? Dana?
Does it not matter whether it's a general comment, like which would be typically at the beginning of our board meeting, versus a specific topic comment? Can the, can the attitude of the participant be the same in both of those instances? That's what I want to know.
The attitude may be the same wherever.
Wherever.
All right. So, if I'm gonna, if the content I'm regulating is about a specific matter, I can shout it from the rooftops on that specific matter.
Gotcha.
And you can listen to it.
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, I understand, you know, public comment, we, it sounds like we would still be able to allow it. What about, what about after public comment during, during our meetings? Just to, I mean, to be able to maintain order in the room, does that mean anyone can interrupt and say anything they want any time?
No, 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 no. This is your meeting, right? So, this decision is pretty clear that we're talking about general public comment. It's also pretty clear that they understand a municipality or other body needs to get through their business, right? So, the main focus of this discussion is the general public comment that many public bodies have in their meetings somewhere, right? Now, if you have a very loose agenda, and you're in the middle of an item, and you're just kind of having a conversation, and you don't like what somebody's saying, you can't really cut them off. So, there's going to be some discipline around your specific agenda items. First of all, the, the first rule is, you never have to allow public comment, of course, unless it's a public hearing, period, whether it's in a general sense or in a specific item. If you allow general public comment, you can regulate time, place, manner in that area, not content. If you're allowing public comment, which you're not required to do, on a specific agenda item, you can limit the content to that agenda item, if you're going to allow the public comment. Okay? You can limit it to that agenda item, and, you know, one minute each, two minutes each, after we get done discussing or whatever. But you, you don't have to have public comment at all, but if you have general comment, it's general comment.
During that period of the meeting.
During that period. If you move on to the specific items, you can say, "We're only going to, we're going to talk about this now because we're, it's important for us to hear what you have to say," but you can only talk about the specific item. And if you're talking about basketball courts, and they start talking about beach erosion, you can say, "Excuse me, we're not talking about beach erosion right now, you need to wait for another time for that, we're talking about basketball courts." Now, that's content regulation, but you can do that in that instance because it's on a specific agenda item, basketball courts. Okay?
Jerry?
Yeah. I didn't find anywhere in the opinion that it said you don't have to have public comment. I mean, in fact, they go to great lengths to describe the colonies before the revolution, saying how, you know, they were less than polite and how important it was. So, where are you, where are you quoting?
Yeah. So, they, you know, they absolutely, they apply that if you, the case is about having public comment, and we've actually had some exchanges with the ACLU, who was supporting the plaintiffs in this case, right?
And I read their opinion, too.
Right. And they agree with us that it does not require you to have public comment, because that would run afoul of the Open Meeting Law in Massachusetts, which gives control of the meeting to the chair. So, they, so, they, they do talk about, they don't talk about, "No, you don't have to have public comment," but that's clearly the interpretation of the decision, and specifically when they talk in footnote 12 about the limited public purposes as well, related to the specific items on the agenda. So, it's pretty clear, we had a long conversation over several days with the ACLU over this particular issue, and they're, they're clear that there's no requirement to have public comment. But if you do have public comment, there you go.
Yes?
So, the idea of public comment at the beginning of the meeting has its parameters in the time, really, that a person can speak and when they speak at the beginning of the meeting.
That's right.
If you were to allow some conversation based around an agenda item during the meeting itself, could you limit that to a two-minute period there also?
Always, always. You can always do that, right?
So, that would allow, you know, a little more flexibility for boards, let's say.
Right. And, and I would say, you know, we have boards that have, it's, you know, everybody, it runs the gamut. We have people who have public comment in the beginning of the meeting, public comment in the middle of the meeting, public comment at the end of the meeting, right? So, it just depends. I mean, I, frankly, I have some boards that have it in the beginning and the end, right? So, it, it, it's really a policy determination of the board.
Any other questions?
No.
Since the Finance Committee is here and the moderator, I'm just going to ask them if they have any questions of Town Council for this, or...
All right. Subject, no.
Dick?
I don't have a question, but if you go home tonight and watch TV, you're going to see an altercation at a town meeting. It's a, it's a board meeting, and somebody actually either pushed or struck another member of this group, but they made it very clear that you cannot do anything about language, however, obviously, physical contact, they arrested the guy.
Right, of course.
But, but language, definitely, not questionable.
Right. But, but not at a town meeting.
No.
I want to be clear about that, right? So, um, so, in any event, in any event, yeah, you can't, they, yeah, they, you know, it's, they do go into a really interesting discussion when they talk about peaceable and orderly is not the same as respectful and courteous, right? So, that's your point, right? Peaceable and orderly is, you know, not physically disruptive. That's different than being respectful and courteous, which is what the policy.
Lisa, if you were to allow public comment at one of your meetings, what would your recommendation be for time?
You know, it really depends on the subject matter and the board or commission. You know, two minutes is actually, you know, it's a long time, right? So, you know, reserve the 10 minutes and two minutes each and, you know, see what happens. And you can change your policy, right? So, that's for that meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, you're going to say, "We're going to have public comment for 10 minutes, you know, more than two minutes each," and if that seems like that's forever for everybody, then, okay, next meeting, you, maybe you want to do it for one minute. Or maybe you have something really important, you want to hear people talk a lot about, you maybe say it's five minutes. I don't know. It really depends on the matter. But you, you, the key is really, you, you need to have a policy generally, and if there's an exception, you need to announce it at the beginning of the meeting, not after three people have spoken and you didn't want to hear what anybody wants to say anymore, right? You need to have whatever you now, announce at the beginning of the meeting and just let, let it go. Just let it go.
To that end, do we have to set the parameters in our agendas that are posted for the meeting posting?
No, you don't. There's no requirement to that.
We could just have public comment and then set it at the beginning of the meeting, set the time, place, manner.
Right. And so, you should, every board should adopt their own policy, right? So, the Finance Committee is going to adopt a policy, and you're going to vote on it, it's going to be on your agenda, public, public speaker, public comment policy, right? You're going to vote on it, and you vote, and now the policy is 10 minutes, two minutes at the beginning of the meeting, and maybe the exception is, you know, unless the chair determines at the beginning of the meeting that the time should be longer or something like that.
Alicia?
And we provided sample policies to Tracy, so if you haven't seen that yet, you're going to...
Yeah?
If a board wants to continue public comment, and with this new ruling, they find that it doesn't work for them, they can't continue it, so they can revote it not to have it?
Anytime.
There's nothing punitive?
Anytime.
Okay.
Just not during that meeting.
Absolutely. So, I mean, it would behoove people to be relatively well behaved anyway. Our boards are going to get rid of public comment.
Right. So, none, none of this actually usurped the authority of the chair of any board or commission under the Open Meeting Law, which still makes them responsible for setting the agenda and running the meetings, right? None of them did that. None of, it did not usurp the authority of the board to adopt the policy. Didn't do that, right? So, you can do all of those things still, still your meetings. If you have public comment, you may not regulate content.
And it's okay to be discretionary when it comes to, as long as you announce it at the beginning of each meeting.
It's not discretionary. At the beginning of the meeting, you're going to say, "We're going to change the time period for public comment." That's different than discretionary in the middle of the process.
But then, correct, but then the following meeting, you might change it again, and then the following meeting, you might change it again.
Right. So, but your, your policy is going to say that you're going to, the discretion is going to go to the chair depending on the topics of the night, right? So, the chair may extend the time period that people can talk, or the time period for public comment, so long as the chair announces it at the beginning of the meeting.
I have to think about this.
Well, it's, if I may, it's, it's really, it's no different than what we read on every single meeting. I would think that if there's something in the agenda that you think is going to be a lengthy topic, then maybe at the, when we go to print, change it then, or...
Yeah. Adopt the policy that says you have that ability, and then announce it on your agenda, however you want to do it.
I don't see this really complicated.
Yeah.
You know, I, I got thick skin. I can handle people yelling at me, you know?
You have to have thick skin to be in this position.
You got to have the stomach for it.
I'm not inviting, I'm not inviting it, folks, okay? I'm just, I'm just making that statement, that's all.
The other side is, just because you can doesn't mean you should. Like, even though you could be rude, you don't need to be.
Right.
Especially when you have to sit there, Dana, and not say anything back. It might not be as easy as you think.
So, so, here's one, one of the things that you can also do, and the case did talk about this, is in your policy and in your statement at the beginning of the meeting, you can encourage civility and courteous behavior, right? You can say that. You can encourage that.
You just can't require it.
Correct.
In a sort of nutshell, it, basically, if we allow public comment through the, with the parameters you say uninterrupted, then once the board moves to its working portion of the meeting, the board can do that without interruption, correct?
Correct. Correct.
It should do that without interruption.
Well, that, you know, that's up to you, it's up to the, it's up to the agenda item and all of that. The answer is you can do it without interruption, unless, of course, you're having a public hearing, in which case, that's got different rules around it.
Right, right.
But any discourse needs to be regard that specific agenda item. We can't just...
If you're allowing public comment during your agenda, correct.
Yeah. And should that be in the policy? Where is that discretion at?
It, it, you really are looking at a public comment policy.
Okay.
Does the policy not need to outline whose discretion individuals are called upon? And what I mean by that is, I've set a 10-minute time period, set a limit of two minutes per person. It's five people, obviously. I've got 30 people that want to speak. At 10 minutes, time's up, that's it.
You can.
But as what, as chair?
The chairs, the chairs.
Is there an opportunity to pick who gets to speak?
So, you can, you can adopt that in your policy, right? So, I have some communities that have people sign up, and then you just call them off the, the list, sit down the list, and if you're, you know, frankly, the City of New bury Port does this in their city council meetings, you go in, you sign up, they have, they literally, they have a cutoff of 10 minutes or 15 minutes, and if you're, you know, five below that, you're, you don't get to speak, right? So, you can do, you can do a sign up like that. You could adopt as part of your policy how the person, you know, how public comment rolls.
And signups conducted on a first-hand basis or something?
Yeah. Right.
So, I understand that everyone has a right to speak, but if you have 10 people and five of them say the same thing, which happens often, certainly at a town meeting, I always cut that off.
Well, you get to, Dick, because you're the moderator and you're king at a town meeting, but cutting somebody off because they're saying the same thing is content regulation.
At a selectman's meeting?
At a selectman's meeting. A town meeting, he can cut them off because it's different, different rules at a town meeting. If you're in a specific agenda item or in a public hearing, you can also say, "I need you to comment on this agenda item, and please try not to repeat yourself," right?
Any other questions? Thank you, Lisa.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Lisa.
All right. You guys have a good night to make a decision for.
Okay. So, I'm actually going to jump around the agenda a little bit because there's some, Dick, you, I don't, did you want to stay or did you want to go?
Should we take the Finance Committee?
I think we should take, take the Finance Committee up front. If that's okay. Oh, Nolan is here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Why don't we take Nolan first? Sorry, Nolan. You were behind Frank and I couldn't see you.
I'm sponsoring Lon Hockwood.
Lon, are you sponsoring Nolan?
Nolan's a junior at Newburyport High School, and he's been working on beach cleanup and cleanup projects, and he's got one planned for the 7th of April, and we'd like to do it on Newbury Beach and moving north on what Farwill get. And then he'll explain the rest of it, so.
Okay. Why don't you come up?
We talked to Tracy about this, or the office, I guess, about this, and they suggested coming and talking to you guys, so.
Why don't you come on up?
Nolan Smith.
All right, everyone?
Hey, Nolan, if you could tell us, I know you're Nolan Smith, but where do you live?
I live in Newburyport, and I'm a student at Newburyport High School.
Okay.
So, as you all already know because of Lon, myself and many others trying to put together a beach cleanup, I partnered with some organizations to put it together, like ACES. We'll go to the next slide. So, the location is right at that parking lot, it's on the main turnpike through Northern Boulevard. It's a pretty convenient place, I got the private to give us permission. So, if you go to the next slide, please. So, our goals, just inspire youth leaders around Newburyport, around greater Newburyport, Newbury, just to keep creating change and keep helping the environment, cleaning up earth species. Important questions, it's after school, 12 to 4:00 p.m., so everyone can make it. We are providing trash bags, hand protection gloves, because there is some bad stuff on that beach. Carpooling is, carpooling is, we want people to carpool, as parking is limited, it is a smallish parking lot, and we want people to share trash bags. We're also going to separate trash into two separate bags, so we have recycling, the two types of recycling set out. So, these are the sponsors, the Interact Club at Newburyport, I'm part of that, and the Treasurer, Rotary Club, Rotary, Northeast Planning Associates, they're applying all the investments for the gloves and the trash bags, and then also G. Mellow is giving us dumpsters to put trash, all the trash in that we collect. And I just want to thank everyone here for having me and contributing to a cleaner environment. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Well, thank you for wanting to clean up our beaches in Newbury.
Yes.
And I'll ask the board, are there any questions? Nolan?
Just be mindful of people's yards, what's public and what isn't.
Yeah.
While you're going about it.
Yeah. I'll make sure that everyone knows.
When is this, Nolan?
April 7.
Perfect. And you did the time, yep, great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone.
Jerry, do you have any questions? No.
Good.
Nolan, thank you so much. Good luck with your event.
Thank you. Thank you. Everyone has a good...
Do you, do we need a, does he need a motion from us to clean up the beach? I don't, I don't think so, no. Just want to make sure you have everything that you need.
And, and the police, let the police know, right?
They know.
Well, the police just walked in.
Okay.
Chief Fisher is here.
Hi, Patty.
No one's going to clean up our beaches.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So, okay, now, I think the Finance Committee, do you guys want to open?
Yes. Why don't we do, what?
We have, we have a form.
Yeah, but everyone is here, so we'll call form, we're all here, so we are open officially, so we can join in. And I have an embarrassing thing to ask. Does anyone have copy of the most recent warrant? Because I left my copy on my desk.
It's okay. I'm lying right here.
Yeah. We're welcome. Thank you. We're welcome.
Is there articles? What's that?
The articles?
Yeah.
The warrants.
Just here with you.
Julie, how many do you have?
Yep. Yep.
Thinking we can have another one, yeah.
Yep. Yep. We'll just go through them and take our votes for the Finance Committee's booklet.
Yeah. Tracy, I'm going to ask you to lead this discussion.
Sure. Be happy to. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, the, the intent of tonight is to go through the, the warrant articles with the idea of taking the board's votes so that they can be recorded in the Finance Committee's appropriations booklet, and the Finance Committee will be subsequently taking their votes at another date.
Yes, we will be meeting separately so that we may deliberate around the table as you are tonight, next week. Location, date and location to be determined, we want to make sure that it is something that's recorded where all of us can be asking questions and it can be viewed on the, on the Newbury Channel by anyone who can't attend that meeting. So, that meeting, we'll talk at the end of this meeting tonight, decide on a date, time, location, whether that be Zoom or in person.
Okay. Thank you.
I think it's important.
Thank you. Okay. So, as we go through the articles, the first article is, is basically what will be appearing on the ballot. The second article will be accepting the annual town report, and at that point in time, there are going to be a couple of committees that will be asking the moderator if they can make reports to town meeting. I think the Newbury Day Group is going to present, and the Finance Committee would make their annual report to the town meeting voters.
And would the Municipal Building Committee present in then?
They, they would make their report at their article.
Okay.
And as well, the, the consultants for the municipal aggregation.
Yeah.
We would prefer to wait until their article.
Okay.
Until the motion is made, and then they would request.
Okay. Thank you.
An opportunity to speak. So Article 3 is the salaries, fixing the salaries and compensation for all of the elected officials. Make a motion and vote on that.
I move to approve Article 3.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just so we're clear, are you guys voting to, they're voting to recommend?
Correct.
Yes, about, I just want to make sure that the, because you've already approved these to be on the warrant, but you're voting to recommend that the voters.
Sorry.
Support that, and we, in the past, if it's not, if there's any, we typically do it as recommend first number, second number, not recommend third number abstain in our booklet.
Yeah, yes, no, abstain, abstain.
But I hope it's reflected, don't they?
So if it's 5, 0, 0, that's easy to recommend, but if there's any that someone disagrees and doesn't want to recommend one of the articles, just, we want to make sure we have that correct.
Okay, thank you, Erica.
Nice.
So I believe that was 5 and 0.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Julie.
Article 4 is a citizen's petition that was submitted. In the past, we have not voted, and other times you have voted, so it's, it's really up to the Board whether they want to make a motion and vote on this, or if you want to live it, leave it to the town meeting body to address it.
No, I think we should let the, I feel we should let this citizen that, Anna Powers, she needs to move this and speak.
Oh, yeah, they would have to, the, the person who presented that, or, or one of their, one of the group that presented it would have to be in the meeting to make the motion.
So in the past, if, if we went, the way you mentioned, it would be like a will of the people?
Yeah, I, I think this should be will, I feel this should be will of the people, I don't know.
Point of mind?
Yes.
It makes reference to Representative Lenny Miera, he's no longer our representative in the last paragraph.
We don't have any opportunity to change it, when citizens' petitions come in, we can't amend them.
Okay.
We have to put them on the warrant as they're presented.
And Madam Chair, one of the things that I just was thinking about in terms of language, that it might be if, if the Board doesn't want to recommend or not recommend, you might want to just abstain, because every vote we take at town meeting is will of the town, and to, just rather than saying, we think this one should be up to will of the town, just setting the precedent that this is, you know, your, your Board doesn't feel that they have a position to make a recommendation. So, just like the Finance Committee won't probably, they will not speak for us, but we may decide that this has no financial impact, so we are not going to make a recommendation.
So you would all vote to abstain?
We would just vote to abstain from making a recommendation.
If we've all ever voted to abstain.
I don't know what the.
Yes, Jean.
Well taken, because everything we do at a meeting, whether you vote 5 to nothing, it's still up to the will of the town.
Right, but will of the town and abstain have 2 total, total different looks to them.
Well, abstain may not be the recommendation.
It may not be abstain, or you might just say the Select, Select Board did not, does not have an opinion.
No recommendation.
No recommendation.
No recommendation.
Well, so what's the difference between that and the will of the people? That we've done in the past many times.
No recommendation's good.
I think you're better off with no recommendation.
I think no recommendation on this one.
Otherwise, I know how I'd vote on this.
I just mention it because we're breaking, we're breaking habit from what we've done in the past here, and I don't want to have a, have a grammar error screw things up.
Right, so Tracy, you have a comment?
So you, the Board would make a motion that they're not going to have any recommendation, or you're just going to ignore it and leave it blank? I'm just not clear.
Neither am I. We're still discussing.
Let's think about this.
I think you, you need to legitimize it a no recommendation, not just to ignore it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, like as a body, you say no recommendation.
So I guess I'll entertain a motion to make no recommendation on Article 4. Do I have a second?
So move.
Okay, now I have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion on this?
So, we're not gonna make a recommendation.
I'm not comfortable changing what we do all of a sudden here, I'm really not, I mean, I might make someone out there more comfortable, but it doesn't make me more comfortable.
What did we usually do, Tracy, can you remember? Anyone remember?
You would make a recommendation, or you would use language that was called will of the town, that came out of town meeting time. I think that's where that, that language came from.
That's what we've always done.
Okay.
I just don't see why change now, especially if we don't have.
I think the phrase has taken on a different meaning in Newbury, maybe.
We're here.
Okay, so that's JR's comment, and it's a point well taken. Any further discussion on, on JR's point? We're gonna make, we're gonna deviate and move to no recommendation from will of the town.
It's, it, it's 2 different things. If you're saying, we don't recommend, we don't, we're not making a recommendation, that's different. That's like saying the Board is not favoring it one way or the other, versus if we don't make a recommendation, of course, it's the will of the people at, at the town meeting, but we're not saying you should vote for it, people, but if we, if we, if we don't make a recommendation.
Does that make sense?
So we're saying, we're saying no recommendations. I, I have an idea, Madam Chair. Maybe, you know, if each of us votes the way we feel is all we should vote, then we can put it on the warrant, you know, who voted to recommend it and who voted not to recommend it. Would that make sense?
Well, this is, that's different, you're voting, I think you're talking about voting at town, town meeting, that's different than voting to put it on the warrant or the vote on it.
Well, it's, it's, it's on the warrant.
It's already on the warrant.
Yeah.
I don't, I just don't see the wisdom in deviating from what we've always done.
JR, he's, what he's looking for is standardization, so you got 3 different choices that have been discussed in the past 5 minutes, yes, no abstain, yes, no will of the town, yes, no, no recommendation, and JR's saying in the past that has been yes, no will of the town, and that the yes, no abstain and the yes, no, no recommendation have not been the one that JR's saying is to.
Be consistent.
Per call up to this point, and because presumably, you put that leaves the door open for, for abstain, no recommendation, different than will of the town, if someone wants to admit.
Okay.
I have a tendency to think that JR's right on this one, and I respect that until we either speak to Town Council or we make a vote as the Board to change the will of the people to something else.
Will of the town.
Will of the, will of the town.
I, I understand what. Frank, thank you for putting it that way in that perspective, that cleared it for me. I really don't want to deviate from what we've done in the past. I understand Jerry's point, and I think it's the same thing, I think we're meshing words here, but I think by voting yes, no, or will of the town, it's making the same thing as yes, no, no recommendation, is what I think.
If we choose to change it another time, we should, you know, for next town meeting?
Well, I don't know if I want to change it again, because.
We'll do a formal vote.
Okay, so, Julie, what's the, what's the motion in the seconds?
The vote, your, I mean, your motion was the Board does not make a recommendation, JR, and then Dana. That's what you.
Okay, you can always just not provide a vote for that, because it was presented by a petitioner, if it's something that you don't have an opinion on, you don't have to vote on it.
I haven't researched this yet myself.
It's like having a zoning grant.
Yeah, exactly. All right, so let's just, do, are you, is my Board comfortable just passing over, over this and not taking a vote on it because it's a citizen's petition? I'm okay with that, are you okay with that, JR? It has no financial impact, like, like Erica said. You okay with that, JR?
I'm okay.
Okay, so we're gonna pass over Article 4. Thank you. Okay, Article 5.
So Article 5 represents all the appropriations in the general operating budget. I think we've all had your, have your binders, yeah. So this represents about a 4.4% increase over the previous year's operating budget. I think you've, in, in the budget document, you've been able to review where the cost center increases were, I don't think it was anything that was unexpected, but that's what we're looking at for this fiscal year.
Okay, so I moved, vote yes on Article 5, is there a second? Or we approve, yeah, yes, no? Second for yes. Okay, discussion, any discussion regarding the total budget? Police, I mean, they were, they were good.
Chief, do you want to talk about Post? We've, we've had lots of conversations about this, it's been a driving factor of.
On my very casual appearance today. So Post, police reform that happened, is taking away reserve police officers. Traditionally, throughout my whole entire employment for the town and even beyond, we had 50% plus or minus part-time officers who would cover dispatch on the desk and the road, and then the other half were full-time officers from chief down. Right now, what is happening, and started about a year or so ago, is every reserve police officer, every part-time police officer, has to take what's known as the Bridge Academy to become certified as a full-time police officer, and then they get the similar certificate to those of us who went through the traditional full-time police academy. We are losing our reserve officers, who covered dispatch and who covered patrol at part-time wages. So, for example, last fiscal year, depending on where in the year we were, we had between 7 and 10 reserve police officers, we are down to 2 this fiscal year, and are trying to operate with that. That have had a heavy impact on dispatch, and it's having a heavy impact on patrol. When we had overtime shifts, sick time in the police department, reserve officers were called in at their part-time wages to cover those shifts and fill those hole, holes, now we're being required to put full-time officers at their overtime rate in those holes. So that's a big piece of the large jump in the police budget. The other piece is, Post is, as they should be, I'm not against this, but they're requiring trainings, additional trainings, we document them, they review them, our trainings go into whether or not we get certified as officers. Those trainings come with cost, the Commonwealth is doing a really good job at trying to bring down, if not offer for free, the cost of the training, we still need to pay for the bodies to be at those trainings at overtime rates. And again, when I have an officer who goes to a training, traditionally, what would have happened is I'm filling their hole with a reserve officer at a reserve rate, now we're filling it at an overtime rate. So this is a big impact that we're having with losing our part-time police force, and it's affecting both dispatch and police operations side of things. We've also had a lot of problems in dispatch finding part-time employees, it's expensive to train dispatchers and keep them, and we just can't, just like other disciplines, we are not able to find part-time employees right now. So that's forced our hands to turn into a full-time dispatch center as well, which is bringing many benefits on one hand, but it is, it is a new cost that the town isn't used to having. Any questions?
Is this a Massachusetts standard or a countrywide?
So this, the way we are enacting it, this is a Massachusetts standard, so these are legislative changes that where we are simply responding to, so with police reform came these legislative changes that now the taxpayer is responsible for kind of helping absorb. There was a request from the community, essentially, if you look at it this way, to make a change in the way law enforcement operated, the legislator answered that change, put police reform in place, and this is the kind of, the first kind of big hit of the consequences of that, of that change.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Jerry?
Yeah, I don't understand why this would result in going from 10 part-time police officers to 2. What, have the, are there 8, have they become full-time or what?
No, so we are losing them, so in order for a part-time officer, many of our part-time officers had full-time jobs someplace else, might have been a little bit older, they don't want to go through the Bridge Academy.
Okay.
The 120 hours of class, they can't, we lost one because he's, his full-time job didn't offer him enough time off to do the in-person learning that is required through the Bridge Academy, and they broke it down by alphabet, so A through H had to be done by last June, you know, July 1st, they lost their reserve certification if they weren't done by then, so they've broken it down by alphabet. So we even had, you know, somebody who said, you know, his job, next fiscal year, I have enough vacation time to, to do that, and I'd be able to stay, but because of where his last name was, he lost his certification July 1, and there's, we explored everything, there's nothing we can do about it because of the legislative changes in the way that it was spelled out in the legislative changes for that. So we in Newbury are losing people because they either didn't want to go through the Bridge Academy, or they couldn't go through the Bridge Academy. What we're seeing on a larger level in the Commonwealth is, police officers are becoming, you know, it used to be, for the sake of simplicity, it used to be, you worked for a department, you stayed with that department, you know, more or less until you retired. Now we're seeing it's more the officer's market for where they want to go. Our prime example is, we lost Officer Dan Jenkins to another town because they paid more. So with these reserve, these full-time certificates that these people who are reserves are getting across the Commonwealth, you're seeing they're not staying with their part-time officers, they're picking up full-time positions, because if I can get somebody higher, if I have a full-time position open, and I can hire somebody who's had years working, even if they were reserved when they were doing that working, and they have a full-time certificate, I don't have to pay to send them to the academy. So these reserves are kind of taking over jobs, and it's creating a market that we're just not used to in public safety. Again, not a bad thing, but it's something we're not, we're just not used to seeing, and it's having an impact, especially on the small towns, Western Masses having a really, the Berkshires, they're having a really hard time, there's some departments that are struggling staying open and offering services to their town. So that in a nutshell is the explanation for why the big bump for police and dispatch.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other questions?
If, I just want to offer to you, if anyone wants me to send them a link for Post and kind of go through the legalese of what Post is and what exactly it's requiring, opposed to my kind of watered-down summary here, I'd be more than happy to share that information with anyone on the Board to kind of look at it.
Thank you, so any Board members interested, reach out to Julie, and she can put you in touch with the Chief.
Please do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, JR, did you have a comment? Okay. Okay, so, any other questions on the budget? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Article 6.
Okay, Article 6, you recall, we put these articles right up front every year, we're gonna be appropriating money into the stabilization fund, $150,000. Right now, we have a current balance of $267,659. Putting this money in and then expending the, the 2 proposed articles from our capital planning committee that, that we're planning on take out, taking out the $150 for the school roof, and the $72,000 for the dump truck purchase, will end up closing town meeting, should they all be approved, with a balance of about $195,000. will end up closing town meeting, should they all be approved, with a balance of about $195,000.
Okay, I want to entertain a motion to approve Article Six.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Article Seven?
Article Seven, we're looking to put another $200,000 into our OPEB fund from free cash. That appropriation will be made from free cash. Right now, we have a $6.3 million liability. Should this be approved, we will have $1,011,360 of that funded.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion, Jerry?
Yeah, isn't, isn't this liability, though, really not definitive? Because this depends on how many people retire, how many people live beyond retirement, that type of thing.
That we update, that's why we have the actuarial analysis updated about every two years.
Every two years?
Yeah, and ours actually came down slightly.
Jerry, I mean, Jaya?
And also important to note, this isn't a Newbury-centric problem. This is something that majority of municipalities deal with in the state.
And isn't there pending legislation to change how they determine what the OPEB liability is right now, too?
To be determined, yeah.
Yeah, so there's a lot in flux there.
It's, you know, I think we've made a commitment to put it at the beginning of each of our warrants so that people are, remain aware of it. It's very easy to be forgotten, so we wanted it front and center. We could also, you know, put it in our regular operating budget until it's fully funded instead of having it appear as a special article in the future.
No, I like it like the special article, personally, I keep it, doesn't, keeps it front and center, just like you said. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article Eight.
That is our annual appropriation for our PEG access special revenue fund. We're looking, seeking an appropriation of $95,000. This basically funds our entire PEG operation, which does include a paid production operations specialist, which is not a new position. This is a position that we have had since 2017, I believe. Right now, the current balance in the PEG account is $885,212.84.
Okay, want to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second?
Question?
Discussion, Jerry?
Discussion. On, at the first annual town meeting that I went to, I was able to get $95,000 for the school. And at last word, you were saying that you were going to do a intern program with the students there. What's happened to that, anything?
That, we have, we have the program. It's available to any Triton students. I think we have one person interning that is not a Triton student, but it is available. And I believe Matt has worked, I can't remember the gentleman's name over there, but the superintendent's aware of it. And Lathrop?
I think-
Bob Lathrop?
Bob Lathrop.
Bob Lathrop, thank you.
How many students are involved in the internship?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I don't know. We have available three each year. We've offered to them.
Okay. I don't know how many kids actually step up and do it, though, but there's opportunity for three.
There's opportunity for three.
Also, I believe in the select board's statement, it speaks to that internship program, I believe. Yeah, that's something new that we did last year.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post?
Article Nine.
This is the annual appropriation of our revolving funds, 53 and a half revolving funds. We have two. We have the recreation revolving fund. Those fees are derived from field rentals, and the request is for $50,000. And the second one is the municipal waterways improvements and maintenance fund, otherwise known as our Harbor Master account. Those fees come from mooring fees, motorboat excise, things like that. And those appropriations are used to run the programs for the fiscal year.
Motion to approve?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article Ten.
This is our ambulance enterprise fund, our very successful ambulance enterprise fund, self-sustaining. Right now, they have a free cash balance of $248,99. And all of the indirect costs sustained by the town have been fully paid in this budget presentation.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can we talk about Morton Salt?
So, the town of Newberry pays, we operate on a fiscal year, and we are required to pay all of those bills within our annual operating year. Every now and then, a bill goes past the allowable July 15 deadline. So our fiscal year ends June 30th, and the state gives us 15 days to pay all of our outstanding bills. This one, whether it was never received, lost in the mail, we don't know what happened to it. It was received after that deadline. Anything after July 15 requires town meeting approval, and I believe it's a 9/10 vote on that.
Motion to approve?
4/5, yeah. 4/5? 4/5?
40th of last year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Article Twelve.
Okay, Article Twelve is a request that's been before the capital planning committee. This is for replacements of the fire department, the police department's firearms. It is being proposed that we pay this purchase through free cash.
Motion to approve?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Article Thirteen is for $11,000. It's to purchase three solar-powered speed signs.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Jerry?
Is that to place on lock and load? Or where are they being placed?
We have one right now on lock and load that's been up there. These three are going to, well, they're mobile, so we can move them. So I'm not going to commit, you know, that any of them stay where they actually are. But we do have, we have recognized three other streets in town through citizens' complaints and our officers' observations where we could benefit from those speed signs. We have seen a huge difference and have gotten feedback from the community about the difference that those signs have made in the neighborhoods when the marked cruiser police presence isn't there. So I'm just looking to fill that, that void.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's three of them, right?
We already have-
We already have-
We have three, we already have three, right?
We have three, this will be adding another three.
So we'll have six total?
And they're mobile, which-
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article Fourteen?
Article Fourteen, we're looking to add three of the flashing crosswalk beacons. And the conversations we've had, we're considering Hanover Street, Elm Street, and School Street.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tracy, are those two, are those also free cashes, what we think?
They are.
Okay.
Yes. Article Fifteen is a continuation of our elementary school roof replacement program. We're in the fourth year, and we expect it will complete, it'll, it'll take eight years to complete the project. This is a $150,000 appropriation being proposed from the stabilization fund and requires a 2/3s vote.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the DPW is requesting to purchase a dump truck. This also went before the capital planning committee. This is replacing a 2013 Chevy 3500 dump truck with 99,253 miles. Again, this is, the proposal would be recommended from the stabilization fund and require the 2/3s vote.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Article Seventeen?
Article Seventeen is proposing that we transfer a million dollars to our town, from free cash to our town hall project. Right now, we have a balance of about $4,089,608. In that account, we'd be looking to add another million dollars.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we vote will of the town on any of these? Is that appropriate?
You move to, move, move it.
This is, well, this is a, this has a financial impact. You can, we're not going to vote will of the town on this. We're going to make recommendations. So it's either be yes, no, or abstain.
Okay.
Okay. So, any other questions? Jerry?
Yeah, I, I take issue with your ruling that he can't move it. He can't move to do will of the people.
Well, um, so instead of yes, no, abstain, I want to make sure I understand what you're saying. You, you recommend yes, no, or will of the, will of the people?
Yeah.
So what we've historically done is yes, no, abstention. Or if the board didn't want to vote, didn't want to take a position on something, they'd just say, well, let that be the will of the people. We're not going to vote on it.
As a group.
As a group. That's what you've done-
What we've traditionally done. Yeah.
In the past.
So, this, this, moving this million dollars into a, into an account that, the town hall project account, that, there's been, how many years have we moved money into this account, Tracy?
I think three. There was one, one year we swept a lot of unexpended appropriation balances in. There was, I think, two years we've moved money from free cash and one year when there was a proposal that it failed.
Okay.
If my memory is correct.
For, for the past three years, we have a track record of putting money aside, saving money aside for this project that, quite frankly, we don't, we need, because we're in temporary location now. So as leaders of the town of Newberry, I think it's important at town meeting to let the town meeting members know what the leadership wants. Now, you can, I- We're all, wait a minute, hold on, Jerry. We're all, there's a five-member board, so we need to vote accordingly. And that's how we record our things, 5-0-0, or 1-4-0. But to, to sit pat on this, I don't agree with, and I, I think we need to, we need to vote. And I'll take any other comment.
Yeah, I, I think you're putting words into all the members' mouths. I mean, I-
How so?
Well, you're saying that it, as leaders of the community, we should vote one way and not another. You're, you're telling us how to vote, and that's inappropriate.
No, no, I'm not telling you how to vote. I just think that this, the buck stops here. And I think that, that we need to, or I feel I need to let my constituents know that this is a looming project that the past board has been behind.
We usually only really entertain will of the people, as I remember, for citizens' petitions.
Or zoning things?
So we usually, when there was an article that had a price tag involved in it, that we select one.
I just want to clarify my question. I wasn't trying to get wrapped around, you answered it very well, by the way. If, if, if we're going to do will of the town, it's going to be a mutual board decision. The other three choices, yes, you know, either I want to recommend it, I don't want to recommend it, or I want to abstain, those three choices would be individual choices.
Yep.
Right.
That, that's all, that's all I wanted to talk about.
Right, we're a five-member board.
And I, and I, and I get it.
Right, we're a five-member board, and we each have our own vote, and we vote the way that we want to vote. And that is reflected in the votes at, on the town meeting. Rec, you know, that the select board recommends or doesn't, you know. So there have been citizens' petitions that have come before this board that have a negative impact on the town budget, that the board has voted, you know, not to recommend. This is something that I think we need to vote on. So I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the Article Seventeen, say aye, aye?
Although you-
Hold on.
Well, okay.
Hold on, okay, so all opposed, because we need yes, no, abstain. Opposed to moving, opposed to Article Seventeen? Opposed, okay, so there's one opposed, and abstains for Article Seventeen?
Abstained.
Okay, do you have that, Julie?
I got that.
Can I ask a question?
I don't think so, Dick. I'm just going to just want to get through, get through this. Thank you. So Article Eighteen?
Article Eighteen is the article that will allow us to do two things. Number one, we'll make an appropriation to complete the town hall project, hopefully. And number two, it will give us an authorization to borrow funds to complete that project. All of that's assuming that the bids come in favorably and they are within the appropriation. Otherwise, we'd be back at town meeting again. So at this point in time, the $11,775 is the project cost determined by the building committee. The way, what you see in front of you is the language that comes out of the statute in terms of allowing the debt, the debt authorization. What will happen at town meeting is you will see, you will hear a motion which will lay out how the funding will occur. That language is provided by our bond council, but it would be something along the lines of appropriating $11,775,500. $5,089,608 will come from free cash. $441,000 will come from unexpended project balances for the police department, and it will lay it out specifically. But we can't really put a number in that motion yet until we understand if Article Seventeen passes or not. Because the number will be different depending on whether or not Article Seventeen passes.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, so before we do that, so this is going to be where the municipal building committee will make its presentation, right? Article Eighteen. The finance committee has to make a presentation as well.
They make theirs at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, but are they going to make a presentation regarding what you said about where the monies are going to come from?
I don't believe so. No, that'll be in the motion. The select board members make the motion.
But the finance committee will be available to answer questions of town meeting members if there's any about budget stuff, where the monies are coming from.
My question is, is that would be, that's when it, during that part of town meeting, I think that's where we should show the impact of the bond. Because the second part of this is that is also on the ballot, is the bonding. So remember that even if this passes a town meeting, if the override does not pass at the polls, this project doesn't move forward. So I think it is upon the finance committee to present, municipal building committee can present the, their process. We can talk about the financial impacts and including what that would mean to the average taxpayer or the average homeowner tax bill.
And when do you want to do that?
I think around this would be, we'll probably do an overview of the other articles at the beginning of the meeting during our report section. But I think rather than having people see that, I think, I'm open to suggestions, but it might make sense to have it be municipal building committee and then-
I think it's more meaningful to the town meeting members to hear it at the time when the article is here, because they're not going to remember. because they're not going to remember. At least that's what I think.
And we can, Tracy, I can work with you on scenario A is that 17 passes, so there's a million dollars more in that.
Mm-huh.
Or scenario B, if that, if 17 doesn't pass, what that, because that will have an impact on that bond number.
Okay. Okay.
Marshall, do you have any thoughts on?
I, I've got an agenda set up when we get into it, so yes.
Perfect.
I do have a lot of stuff over in the agenda.
Okay.
In terms of our financial piece.
But you guys are going to talk about that at YAMU?
We'll talk about that at our meeting and what we do, but, and again, we'll also be taking our votes on whether or not we're recommending or not recommending each of these articles.
Okay.
But that's, it's just that, I know it's always confusing that the articles, as they're written right now, say, or any other amount. We know that when the actual thing that is voted is made on the town floor that night, and that is what is actually voted on, so there won't be, or any other sum, that'll be.
It'll be a definitive amount.
It'll be a definitive.
Yeah, in the motion.
Yep. Okay, any other questions? All in favor of Article 18? Yes?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all opposed to Article 18?
Yes.
Abstained.
Okay, one opposed and one abstained, okay. Article 19? These are bylaws.
Yep, that's a, a proposed bylaw amendment that would double the amount of the veterans and other exemptions.
So Dana, are you going to speak to that?
Um, I've, I've talked about this before, and I will be presenting a, a presentation at the annual town meeting in regards to Article 19. The, the short answer is, we want to offer what will, not we, what this article does is it offers a larger exemption to our disabled veterans. And I will discuss that in detail.
Yeah.
At the annual town meeting.
Yeah, we've already discussed it here. We voted to put it on the warrant, but I'm talking about town meeting. You're going to speak to this, to the town meeting?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor of Article 19? Say aye.
Aye.
Did you get into a motion?
Oh.
Oh.
I want to entertain a motion to approve Article 19.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay.
Did anyone make an initial motion?
No.
Did we have an initial motion?
She just, I just did, I moved, well, I moved it. I, I moved it, and he seconded it. Okay, Article 20?
Um, so we had a presentation back in December from a consultant relative to municipal aggregation. Passage of this article, uh, this, the motion made under this article would allow the select board to enter into those contracts, and residents may then have the ability to choose to opt in or opt out.
And we've confirmed that they're coming to this event?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I want to entertain a motion to accept Article 20?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Article 21?
So Article 21, um, town council will speak to at the, at the town meeting. She'll be able to discuss the final legal points, but basically what it's going to do is allow us to use public resources on private roadways when it is determined by the DPW director that it's necessary. What happened was back in, um, 2015, we had no inventory of any of our roadways. We didn't know what was public, what was private, what was state-owned roads. So we did hire a consultant, and we worked with the town clerk's office to go through all of the town meeting votes to try and put together a relatively good, um, inventory. From time to time, we do run into issues where we identify a roadway that we thought was public and was pri, is actually determined to be private or vice versa. So, um, this gives, like I said, the DPW director the ability to address plowing or repairing those roadways as he determines appropriate until that roadway can either be accepted as a town roadway or not in the future. There's, um, you know, there's one in particular that came up. It was, I believe it's Fruit Street, in which part of it's public and part of it's private. But the area where the DPW has to stop plowing is very difficult for them to maneuver to make the turn. So it's much easier for them to go down to the end of the, the private section and turn around there, and this would allow them to do that.
So, um, I want to entertain a motion to approve or to recommend Article 21?
It's all moved.
Yep.
Is there a second? Give me a second, okay. So this is going to go back to the will of the town issue that we just kind of hammered from home. These past two articles, nineteen and twenty, we voted on to recommend them, but there's no budgetary impact. I still think, well, actually, Article 19 does have a budgetary impact because it's a tax exemption. But I think that, um, I think that we did recommend those, and I, I understand why. Do we want to vote on Article 21 and, and recommend it? I, I think we should, because I think it's, it shows that this is good for the town. This is the discussion, what do you want to discuss?
We're in discussion now? I, I, I totally think that, that this is something that we should approve.
Recommend?
Just because of what you said about, you know, the DPW having issues with, you know, when they have to stop, how they're going to turn around, you know, and, and, you know, I, I think it's pretty involved in as far as like, you know, the, the butters have got to be involved and all that other stuff moving forward. But I, I would, I would like to approve it, you know.
Okay, so a comfortable voting on this, my board?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jerry?
Yeah. There could be. I, I mean, there could be, but I wouldn't imagine, not substantial, nothing material.
I just want to, I think a big interesting impact is, it, it has to be a paved road. I mean, there's, there's a few roads I know that are privately owned where the, the people that own them would love to have us maintain them, but the criteria is it has to be a current paved condition road, you know, so. I mean, I don't agree that we should be sending graders out to fix dirt potholes or anything if they're private roads. That's, that's all.
Right.
Okay, uh, does the finance committee want to, do you comment, Erica, or do you want to close your meeting?
Um, just if there's any, do you have any requests of us as the select board that we should be prepared for at town meeting or anything that?
I mean, nothing that hasn't, it's not already on the warrant that I can think of.
Um, and then actually, this is where I would like to open up discussion just to our board. Next Tuesday night, this room is not available for a meeting because it's being used by another, it's being used by a conservation commission. So because we typically have very candid discussions of each of these warrant articles and take our motions of recommending, not recommending, I want to make sure that we're in a location where we have excellent, um, coverage, so that anybody wants to watch it after the fact live or after the fact. So one alternative is holding it at the Byfield Police Department with a temp, with a, we get a quarterback camera to bring there, or we can look at using, this room is available on Wednesday night, I believe. Actually, we have a Friday morning meeting, although we will probably be in Zoom. Also, maybe the governor signs the legislation. That was the other thing, is that we could do Zoom. I can also offer you the police training room as well, as large enough to host you guys if you have a camera for there.
My only concern with doing it at the police station is that it's a public meeting, and it has to be open to the public.
Yeah, the public can access the training room.
Okay.
In operations, yeah.
Thank you, Patty.
You're welcome. Do you guys, seven o'clock? Seven o'clock at?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, police station, we will get a camera.
Yep.
And? Motion for next meeting?
It's all moved.
Thank you. Do you want to close your meeting, or?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to move down to, I see Carrie is here, Carrie Stratton. I would, we have an appointment of Carrie Stratton Boyd for the Board of Registitors from April 1st, 2023 to March 31st, 2026. I want to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. A motion to appoint.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Carrie, did you want to come up and say hi? Thank you, thank you for serving.
Do you want to let the finance committee catch it?
Yes. It's up to you. You can come on up. The finance commi?
Let's let the.
You have to come up here.
Let the finance committee get out. If you guys want.
Hi, Erica.
I didn't prepare anything. I really just want to thank you. It's a pleasure to serve. I've learned a lot about the town. I've learned much more about my neighbors. I've lived here for 42 years and still don't know some of the people on our street. So checking people in for town meeting, um, serving when we had the discussion over who was going to be our representative was very interesting. So I've loved serving, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Well, thank you for stepping up and serving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Volunteering. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Carrie. Okay, now we have to review and approve election worker. Well, I'll go back up here. Review and prove commercial clam licenses.
I'm going to recuse from any of the.
Colbies? Okay. I'm going to take them.
Need to do it first.
All right, so I'm going to entertain a motion to, well, before I do that, let me have some discussion. Does, how does the board, how does the board want to do this? Do you want me just to read them straight down? I'll do new applicants, and then I'll do renewals, um, and I'll ho, I'll hold. You want to put, I'll take the Colby separate, and I can put a hold on them. And then we can do, take them all at once, or do you want me to go over them individually?
No, all at once is good for me.
All at once is good. Jerry, do you have any?
That's fine.
It's good for you, Dana?
All at once, yeah.
All right, um, let me, why don't you recuse yourself? I'll take the Colbies first.
Motion.
And then, we'll do that, okay. So, could I have a motion to approve the, uh, clam licenses?
For the Colbies.
For the Colbies.
Motion.
There a second?
Second.
Okay. This is for the following Colbies. Charlie Colby, 142 High Road. Gavin Colby, 656 R Central Street. Mason Colby, 56 R Central Street. Laura Colby, 131, 171 Hay Street. Bob Colby, 171 Hay Street. Ben Colby, 158 Elm Street. And Charles Colby Jr., 56 R Central Street. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can you go get your other? So now I'm going to, um, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the new applicants as read. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
The second, okay. These are the following new applicants. Alexander Atwater, 11 Bittersweet Lane. Jack Cuddy, 56B Cottage Road. Arlen Du, Dubois, 7 Myers Lane. Gage Foley, 9 Bittersweet Lane. Russell Lakey, uh, 30 Riverview Drive. Paxton Lakey, 30 Riverview Drive. And Tyler Lakey, uh, 30 Riverview Drive. And Michael Lahey, 12 Temple Boulevard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, I'll entertain a motion for the following renewals. Who wants to move it?
Motion to accept.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the following renewals. Kyle Adams, 42 Cottage Road. Frank Bennett, 131 High Road. Peter Britt, 79 Pine Island Road. Augustus Kemp, Kempatelli, 12 Main Street. Timothy Castine, 6A Rogers Lane. Joshua Dodge, 45 Fruit Street. Jay Dodge, 45 Fruit Street. David Elwell, 48 Fruit Street. Haley Foley, 9 Bittersweet Lane. Douglas Foley, 9 Bittersweet Lane. Zach Fornier, 12 Wayside Avenue. Robert Fornier, 15 Spring Hill Road. Fred Hostrat, 35 Old Rowley Road. Dan Iwanowitz, 14 Wayside Avenue. Jeffrey Janveren, 32 Forest Street. Alexander Mason, 7 Myers Lane. Noah Merrill, 131 High Road. David Morse, 119 Main Street. Cody Nixon, 53 Plum Island Turnpike. Michael Nixon, 53 Plum Island Turnpike. Corey Nixon, 53 Plum Island Turnpike. Casey O'Brien, 2 Church Street. Travis Papoulis, 48 Cottage Road. William Papoulis, 48 Cottage Road. John W. Short, 120 Main Street. William Short, 145 Main Street. Paul Thistlewood, 26 Central Street. Peter Thistlewood, 26 Central Street. John K. Thistlewood, 26 Central Street. Tim West, 7R Moody Street. Thomas White, 36 Downfall Road. Jacob Wood, 9 Lund Street. And Stephen Wood, 9 Lund Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, all have been approved. Okay. Next, we have to review and approve the election worker appointments. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the following election workers as, as I read them. Karen Berry, 12 Parker River Drive. Esther Burnier, 55 Elm Street. Nancy Burke, 10 Larkin Road. Alexander Burke, 10 Larkin Road. Donna Callahan, 4 Torrey Lane. Deb Casey, 64 Carter Street, number eight in Newburyport. Caroline, Carolyn Casey, 6 Forest Street. Wanda Crowe, 28 Hay Street. Janine Cunningham, 143 Scotland Road. Lisa Dorville, 46 Low Street. Heidi Fram, 21 Forest Street. Marlene Coslow, 36 Caldwell Farm Road. Terry Literest, 45 Northern Boulevard. Jessica McHale, 60, Old Rowley Road. Wilma McDonald, 229 Northern Boulevard. North End Boulevard in Salisbury. Kathy Muse, 10 Marsh Ave. Dave O'Neil, 31 Pearson Drive. Bernadette Powers, 11 Central Street, Unit 1. Molly Seamus, 35 Hanover, Hanover Street. Joan Wayburn, 4 Hartway and Rowley. And Richard Keys, 38 Parker Street. Do I have a motion?
Motion to appoint, all?
And a second? Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I think Carrie, under Boards and Committee Reports, I signed the PR 2319 of Julie O'Brien. Old Business discussed the April 15th meeting time and April 22nd meeting time and place. The April 15th meeting time is going to be, uh, location is going to be right here, 12 Kentway. And it's going to be nine to 11 a.m. The Municipal Building Committee, um, will be here. That's you, Dana?
Yep.
And, um, uh, they will, um, have a presentation up and entertain any questions. The April 22nd meeting place and time, um, there's been some discussion around opening up the old town hall building. I haven't firm that up to see, A, if it's safe, to talk to the, um, the head of the DPW on that one. So, um, we're going to hold that one, and on our next meeting in April, we'll firm, firm that one up. Town administrators report.
I don't have one tonight.
Okay, thank you. Under Correspondence, we've had a letter from Comcast regarding changes to service. Under Correspondence, we've had a letter from Comcast regarding changes to service. Let me just read that really quick.
Increases a dollar a month.
Hmm?
Increases a dollar a month, a month, a dollar a month for HBO and HBO Max.
Yeah. We are committed to keeping you.
No.
We are committed to keeping you and our customers informed about changes to Xfinity TV series accordingly. Please note the following changes to Xfinity rate card provided in your community. Effective April second, twenty twenty-three, the monthly subscription for HBO and HBO Max will increase from fourteen ninety-nine to fifteen ninety-nine per month as a result of a recent increase in HBO and H-E-B-O Max programming costs. Customers are receiving notice of this change in their bill. Please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions at Carrie underscore Morris at Comcast dot com. She's the Senior Manager of Government Affairs. Meeting updates. I have a meeting update. Does anybody else have a meeting update? Anybody else can go first.
Are you going to talk about the Town Day? Is that what your meeting update is?
No, my meeting update is my meeting with the, at the MMA today. So you can go next.
Town Day, we had one last Saturday, and Bill, you, do you know what the status is on the helicopter at the airport? Do you have any, any updated information on that?
No, I, I requested that the helicopter be available. I haven't had a response.
Okay, I did, I have the, the jet, the jet team that flies model jets down at the airport. I, I, we talked about it during our meeting, that that would have been a really highlight of the day, I think. Well, I shouldn't say that. For me, it would have been. And it, we, we've got a lot of good response of, well, the, the board itself, the committee itself feels as though that we should try and work Plum Island into part of the, part of the day, and there is going to be a model airplane group. It's IMAC.
IMAC.
Yeah, and, and they are going to be down there. They've offered to do, I, I call them tours, but, you know, obviously, you're not going to tour a little model airplane, but they're going to have some, some of the jets are going to be on display, that the kids are going to be able to see and ask questions about, and they're going to be down there, I, I believe flying airplanes. I've got to get into a discussion with that group on whether or not they're going to get a food truck. If they, if they have a food truck for their event, then we're golden. If they are not going to provide food and beverages, then I'm going to try and work something out with food and beverages down at the airport if this all comes to pass. And I would also like to work on having some kind of an event where we get the kids involved doing, you know, paper airplane challenges, or, you know, some, something to that effect to get the kids involved down at the airport. As far as the schedule goes, the daily schedule for that day, I have no idea. It's not on the schedule yet, so.
Yeah, they haven't made it yet, I don't know.
We, we haven't made up a schedule for the event, but that's what's in the works. We're talking about a lot of other things, and I just want to shout out that anyone who wants to volunteer, our meetings are on the Town website, aren't they?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you can go on the Town website, you can discover when our next meeting's going to be, and anybody can show up, and if they've got any ideas or want to contribute, we'd love to have you.
I believe there's going to be another town ride, like brainstorming session again coming up. I think Rob is going to announce it at, at the Town meeting, so. And I think there's a website, too. Do you know the name of the website, the, the email address, Newbury Town Day?
Newbury Town Day.
Dot at gmail dot com?
Gmail dot com.
Yeah, newbrytownday at gmail dot com, if anybody interested.
And they have a Facebook page.
They have a Facebook page.
And they have a website.
And they have a website, and, yeah.
NewburyTownDay.org. Okay. Any other meeting updates? Can I go now? So, most of us, I don't think you, I don't think you were there, JR, attended the District Communication Meeting la, on the twenty-third, when we met with our legislators. That was Bry, Bruce Tar and Kristin Kastner and Heather Shand. Is it Heather Shand? I think it's Heather Shand.
Dawn.
Oh, Dawn Shand, sorry. Heather, I get them confused. Dawn Shand. And so I think Brian Forget laid out a very sobering reality of the financial impact of Chapter Seventy monies, and how it's impacted our town over the past twenty years and continues to impact our town. I met with the MMA today. This is our second meeting of the year in twenty twenty-three, and we had a very long discussion regarding Chapter Seventy money, because it's affecting all of the smaller communities. Two hundred and twelve school districts across the Commonwealth are sharing forty-seven million dollars of an additional half a billion that the governor has pumped into Chapter Seventy money. Two hundred and twelve school districts are sharing forty-one million dollars of a little over half a billion dollars that the government has put towards the governor in the governor's budget, an additional, additional monies. It's, it's, it's crazy. And Bruce Tar had a very good analogy of taking a bucket of water and pouring it into a sieve and just having the money just leak out all over the place and not getting to the bottom where it needs, it needs to go. I made that analogy today at our meeting, and the legislative aide that handles our meetings at the MMA is going to try to find ways to try to plug up those holes, so that money doesn't spill out to other school districts somehow, some, some way. So she's wanted Brian's PowerPoint. I emailed her, him, copied her. He, she got it. The Town Administrator in the city of North Borough, soon moving to Foxborough, got the same email that I got, we got from Brian about that inequities in the dis, distribution of that extra monies. And this is a big, this is starting to gain traction now. So it's, they had something out in the western part of the state, Legislative Breakfast out there. It's the hot topic. Everybody is ta, talking about it, because it is a train, a train wreck. So I'm a little bit hopeful. I don't think there's political will to take apart all of Chapter Seventy and rebuild it. I don't think that will happen, but I'm hoping if they throw enough mud, lack of a better word, at it to try to put up the holes, we'll get something. But this has now been elevated to the top of the list at the Fiscal Policy Committee meeting. They're going to make recommendations, so I feel like it's going somewhere. And that's my really good news. Somebody listened, finally. Okay, so we have public comment. Before we go into review and approve minutes, and we have executive session tonight, so to receive oral communications from members of the public, members of the public may address the Select Board for up to three minutes. The Select Board shall not engage in discussion on topics raised during public comment, but may choose to add the topic to a future agenda. This agenda segment will be limited to fifteen minutes. I'm going to ask JR if he would keep time. Do you need my watch, do you have your phone? Okay. Is there any public comment? Come on up.
Thank you.
The Select Board has the ability to talk.
Hold on.
Oh, Leslie Matthews, one eleven, one eleven Main Street. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
The Select Board has the ability to be public in front of the entire community, and your opinions are valued. However, it, when you're making your opinions, you may be swaying the public to go in your direction, and I don't think that that's the job of what you're supposed to do. You're supposed to remain in a neutral position, for instance, like Town Hall, so that the people can gather their information from all different aspects. If they see it publicized and they see that the high uptown officials are making their judgments and professing them to the, to the community, it, it, it might convolute their way of thinking. So that's, that's my concern.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any, any other public comment? Mr. DeMayo.
Bill DeMayo, twelve Orchard Street. If you were to go to the Upper Green, you'd see a monument for Civil War veterans and a World War II monument. If you go to the Byfield Community Arts Center, you'll see a statue of a soldier at Civil War. If you go to the post office and back of the post office, you'll find the World War II monument, and they're all great, but, and, a lot of, there's been a lot of veterans activity that the three hundred and nine veterans of Newbury have gone through beyond World War II. So I would like you to consider adding an agenda item. I would like to launch a team to try to establish a monument that would be inclusive to the men and women of Newbury who served, are serving, and will serve, and some words about gratitude for that. So I just ask you to consider that as an agenda item for a future meeting.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. I'll entertain a motion to review meeting minutes.
Motion to approve meeting minutes. Second.
All in favor?
Um, I'm, on, for March seventh, I'm going to abstain since I wasn't there.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve March seventh minutes. Jerry's abstaining. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. I meant, so moved. Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jerry's abstaining. I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March sixteenth.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to sign warrants.
Motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now. We need to move into executive session.
Will we be coming back?
Uh, no, I don't believe, oh, we will be. Yes, we will be. Okay. Okay, I move we enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one, A three, to review, discuss, and consider the board's response to the open meeting law complaint against it dated March first, twenty twenty-three, filed by Jack Rybicki and on file with the Town Clerk, whereas discussion of this matter in open session would have a detrimental effect on the board's litigating position, and the chair so declares it. And to reconvene in open session to vote and approve the same. I need a roll call vote. JR Colby?
Yes.
Oh, first, I need a second, I'm sorry.
Second.
I just went right over that. So I moved it, Jeff seconded it. I need a roll call vote. JR Colby?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Jeff Walker, yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Dana Packer?
Yes.
Alicia Greco votes yes. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We will be reconvening. Nice to see you, Carrie. Thanks for coming out. In open session, we haven't closed our meeting. I will entertain a motion to accept Town Council's response to Mr. Rybicki's open meeting law complaint of March first, twenty twenty-three. Is there an, is there a?
Second.
Motion?
Oh, so moved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Abstain. I abstain.
You abstained. Okay, we have one abstination, four yes, one abstain. And now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.